At Plainfield Road, that was requested by staff. It was supported by Cook County. And after consideration of the request, IDOT has agreed to move forward with a hard closure from Forty-Ninth to Plainfield. So basically, the traffic going northbound will be prohibited past Plainfield. We do believe that will stop the, and pretty much eliminate, the cut through traffic that people south of Forty-seventh have been experiencing. This reconfiguration will reduce traffic on Forty-Ninth and Tenth Avenue. As restriping is required, the change will take place when at least forty degrees allows for the striping to be applied. And we do know that storms are coming, so it probably isn't going to be for a week or two, but that's our hope. The village is pleased that our partners at IDOT have agreed to this improvement, and staff and I and the board will be working closely with them to ensure that it's striped as soon as possible. Looking ahead to the spring, IDOT is also planning on pausing construction activity from May until December. Most people think of construction, they think of May till maybe November. But we assume on the village side that this was bid this way. There will not be construction from May to December. The village is working with IDOT to really figure out how that intersection is going to be left for those six, seven, eight months that we're talking. Hopefully, the traffic will flow as well as can be hoped. Again, the village will be working with our partners, with IDOT, to learn more how this will impact all of us. On better news, LaGrange Restaurant Week. Many of us are looking forward to LaGrange Restaurant Week, which will take place February twenty-ninth through March ninth. This signature culinary event is calling for you to bring your appetite to LaGrange as all of our best restaurants will offer value-based menus that reflect LaGrange's rich culinary diversity. Take this opportunity to experience hotspots that serve Italian, Japanese, Chinese, barbecue, and contemporary American cuisine. It's a popular time for dining in LaGrange. It's never too early to make your reservations, so grab a table at all the participating restaurants. We look forward to that. We have a couple of businesses that are going to come before us today. Water Lemon will be asking for a change to allow them to increase some of their offerings, and we'll hear more about that, and we're looking forward to it. Wooden Paddle is also in the house. They're coming for their liquor license for both their restaurant and their banquet space, which they think will be opening soonish, I think is the word they like to use, and we're looking forward to when that opens. And I know we're going to hear a little bit from them when it comes time for that. So the owners have been very busy. They've been working really well with staff. We're looking forward to having them come to town. Going back to some business at hand, cold weather. I really do want to thank all of our first responders and especially our Department of Public Works. We've had eleven water mains break this recent cold spell. The team tells me it's the freezing and the thawing, the freezing and thawing that really makes the water mains susceptible. I've spoken with other towns. Some have had a little less than us. Some have had considerably more than us. So it's not us. It's just really the season. Last year, we got off relatively easy, and I think karma's catching up and making up for it. So we appreciate the hard work from the members of the public work. They've been confronting these water main breaks. As luck would have it, have happened on Forty-Seventh Street. They've happened on Ogden, near LaGrange Road, so really highly trafficked areas. But we do appreciate what the team's done. The weather will tell you that we are going to have some heavy snow this week, so I know they'll be out there salting, plowing, and doing everything to make it as safe for everyone. So thanks again for that. And with that, Manager Knight, please provide the manager's report.
You bet. Thank you, President Kukler, and good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick announcements here. Looking forward to next week. Village offices will be closed in observance of President's Day, which is on Monday, February seventeenth. On that day, village offices will be closed to reopen on the Tuesday following. As a reminder, there are several village services available online. We encourage you to check those out on our website. Secondly, and lastly, staff is busy finalizing a presentation for the capital improvement budget for the proposed fiscal year 2025-26, which begins May first. As part of this process, capital projects presentation will take place during the village board meeting scheduled for February twenty-fourth. Presentation will include projects planned to occur during the next budget year, as well as preparations being made to address the village's infrastructure capital plan, which was recently reviewed by the village board. Staff is looking forward to that discussion and that important part of the budgeting process. President Kukler, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And I'd ask Village Clerk Saladino to read the items on the consent agenda, followed by those items appearing under current business.
A second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale, Trustee McGee. With that, any discussion?
As previously stated, I recuse myself from voting on any agenda items related to the village prosecutor. I have no questions on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I would ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Under current business, the first item is an ordinance approving the zoning code text amendment to modify the definition of commercial food preparation facility, and I do believe this is applicable to Water Lemon, so I'm going to have Trustee Thompson introduce this. But please feel free to come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about it also after Trustee Thompson's done.
Thank you, President Kukler. Nina Makowiski, did I get that right? Makowski, I apologize for that, is the owner of Water Lemon Kids, applicant at Twenty-Five South LaGrange Road, Unit A. The applicant is requesting a text amendment to Section sixteen one oh two of the LaGrange zoning code to modify the definition of the commercial food preparation facility. The applicant desires to lease space to a juice company, Benny B. Good, to prepare and sell food products within the Water Lemon Kids in effort to expand their current food and drink offering. The applicant currently cannot do so under the terms of the zoning code because such an operation would constitute a commercial food preparation facility in the Twenty-Five South LaGrange Road location. Does not meet the, excuse me, the locational requirements for a commercial food preparation facility. Though initiated by the applicant regarding their property, the amendment of Section sixteen dash one oh two to modify the definition of the commercial food preparation facility is a modification defined term in the village's zoning code. Therefore, the proposed amendment is not specific to the applicant's property, but would apply broadly throughout the village. The village staff conducted extensive research to determine a definition that more aligned with the intended purpose of the commercial food preparation facility definition and presented an updated definition to the plan commission. The plan commission reviewed the proposed amendment at the hearing on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The commission reviewed the standards for the text amendment and confirmed that the proposed operation would have no impact on the approved special use permit for the Water Lemon Kids. The plan commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to modify the definition of the commercial food preparation facility, as outlined in the staff report and is subsequently included in the attached ordinance. Recommendation from the staff is to approve the proposed ordinance approving the zoning code text amendment to modify the definition of the commercial food preparation facility. And I would motion that we continue this, but would love to hear more details about your plan, if you would.
A second.
Oh, that's my bad side.
Come on, Hank. Come on, Hank.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for that. I'm not really sure what I can add. It's quite simple. Quite frankly, Water Lemon is looking to sell fresh juice to our customers and our community, and currently, we are not able to do that. The partner that I've been working with is here today as well. Her name is Ashley, and her company is Benny B. Good Juice. She is, like me, a local mom, two young children, and she just has a wonderful product that I think would do well with our clientele. It's quite simple. Happy to answer any questions you all have.
And just for the people watching at home, now, assuming it passes, when do you think it will be offered? And are you going to be hoping to sell it outside the people that are just your customers?
Of course, yes. If it were to be approved, there are a few things that we'd like to change at Water Lemon. Water Lemon, I do want to clarify, is staying Water Lemon. There have been a number of people who have called asking me if Water Lemon is closing or if Water Lemon is becoming a juice bar, and that is not what's happening. So just to set the record straight for anybody that was curious, we are still very much going to be the exact same business. This is just a new offering. And so to answer your question, Mr. Kukler, hopefully in the next few months.
Okay. Soonish, that seems.
Soonish, yeah, throw your term.
All right, Nina, well, congratulations to both of you. I guess we should wait for the vote for the congratulations, but unless there's any more. Oh, we got a comment.
Well, I was just going to say, thanks. Thank you for continuing to be such an innovative business in town. It's a beautiful place. It's clear that nothing is changing, but you're just adding another wonderful item to the mix. This will be healthy for the customer and for the children, and I'm excited to see it, and you're an example for many businesses, and we look forward to seeing you continue to grow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, I would ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote. Oh, we got more.
So for Claire.
That was my understanding of what we were motioning up, and I think that's what was seconded, so we're voting on. If you vote aye, you are voting to approve allowing the food preparation so that they can have a juice bar operation. Okay, I think we're set. If Clerk Saladino could call a roll call vote.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously, so congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Absolutely. Moving on to B, a resolution approving Task Order fifteen with Chris Burke Engineering. I would ask Trustee McGee to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Kukler. In July of last year, I'm sorry, the resolution approving Task Order fifteen with Christopher Burke Engineering for Professional Engineering Services. In July of last year, the village was provided notification of successfully being awarded two million in the state of Illinois' grant funding for a proposed project to construct underground stormwater detention at Lyons Township High School North Campus. A portion of this funding, one million dollars, is administered through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunities, Economic Development, and Public Safety Grant Program. The grant is available on the state fiscal year, which began July first, two thousand twenty-four, and concludes June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. The proposed Task Order fifteen was with Christopher B. Burke Engineering. BBEL will arrange for the preparation of engineering design plans and construction bidding assistance for the flood improvement project proposed for the LT Athletic Field located northwest of the intersection of Elm Avenue and Edgewood Avenue. The project includes a ten-acre foot underground storage vault in this location to provide temporary stormwater storage during large storm events. The design work is planned for completion this May. The timing of additional aspects of the project, such as bid, award, and construction, is contingent on the village receiving additional grant funding in alignment with the school's schedule, with tentative dates appearing in the task order as placeholders. The overall estimated cost for the project is estimated at eight point nine million. Grant mitigation, grant applications for the additional required financing have been submitted to the Federal Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, as well as the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District Stormwater Partnership Program. Announcements regarding which applicants will be awarded funds are anticipated soon. As DCEO grant terms dictate expenditure of the funds within the year state fiscal year, remaining funds will be applied towards ongoing flood mitigation efforts and the offsetting of public safety salaries as provided for in the grant terms. Savings derived from offsetting public safety salaries will in turn be reinvested in flood mitigation efforts. Expenditures associated with this task order are reimbursable through the Economic Development and Public Safety Grant Program. Recommendation from our staff is approval of this proposed resolution approving Task Order fifteen with Christopher Burke Engineering for Professional Engineering Services. I motion that this request be granted.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee McGee and Trustee Thompson. Just again, to summarize, this would be storage under LT's West Field. The primary purpose would be to mitigate flooding at Sunset and Elm. We did receive commitment from the state for two million dollars, one million of which needs to be spent in the next year. That is the money that is being discussed today. We did receive previously good news regarding, from sources, that the federal grant looked very promising. Then in the last few weeks, it's been unclear whether any grants or money will be awarded, so we're kind of in that limbo. At one time, we were told we'd hear by mid-January. Obviously, it's now February, so we are anxiously awaiting. We're very hopeful, and that would be the way to get this project moving quickly. So that's the hope. I know some people are wondering when they hear eight million dollars, how does that impact the Fiftieth Street project? And they're two independent projects. They're not impacted one on the other. The Fiftieth Street project is the one where we had to have the quarry litigation, which we were successful at the trial level. That's in the appellate court. We are waiting for the appellate court to either rule or schedule oral arguments, but we aren't just stopping and waiting. We're waiting and working, and we've applied for permits with MWRD, other governing bodies. Those have been submitted, have been reviewed primarily by MWRD. They've sent back to our engineers for clarifications and updates. Our engineers are working on that. So we're taking the position of full speed ahead on the Fiftieth Street project. We obviously need to get the permitting all squared away before we can consider going out to bid, and the bidding timelines and things will be dictated somewhat controlled by our engineers, but again, dictated on what makes the most sense as far as construction seasons and things going forward. So we're pushing that forward. Again, it's independent of what's under B, but they are both flood mitigation projects. So with that, and a motion, I would ask any trustee comments on B. Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. My question is just, what is the latest from Lyons Township High School, this project's contingent on their plan to move forward? What is the latest on when they might be interested in breaking ground? Because obviously, we can't move forward until they do.
I'm not exactly positive if, and I'll let Village Manager Knight answer, but I don't know that that's necessarily true, that we can't break ground until they're ready. It may be an independent project if they decide not to do anything. If they're doing something, it would make sense that they would do it after we're done so that we don't re sod the field if they're going to tear it up for some other purpose. But I'll let Village Manager Knight answer that.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We want to make sure the projects align with one another so that we're not stepping on each other's toes. Just really to kind of give perspective here, this particular item is for the design engineering, so this would get the project ready pending that grant funding.
Correct. I understand that, but it's good to know that this money will be used regardless then of whether LT redoes the turf field or not. That's what we're saying.
If you're talking about this particular item, yes.
Yes, this particular item. Yes, okay. Well, I hadn't knew that, so that's good. Obviously, we wouldn't do it. If they're planning to do it, we're not going to have it ripped up twice. We would, we'll be in coordination with them, but do we have any sense of recent communications with them as to where it is in their game plan? Or can we?
We haven't been a part of those conversations. We're just touching base on this particular milestone in the project. So of course, if we have funds aligned for construction, we would then kind of reach out and see if we could plan the project for a point in time that works for both.
Because I would think the project might, the engineering might be a little different if it's going to be under a soccer field versus not, right?
I don't know that that's true. It may be designed the same way regardless.
Okay.
Trustee Thompson.
Thank you, President Kukler. And I really did, Citizen Pluto's comment, you know, while the North Basin, and I agree there has been a variance in what is the North Basin size of the flooding between Christopher Burke and Baxter and Woodman, that's a question we've asked since 2021. And I've talked to those engineers. There's a debate whether it's land north of Ogden, south of Ogden. But the thing is, in this particular case, it has no bearing on this project. This project is a very specific, finite part of the village. We know exactly what that acreage is and what the drainage is. I fully support this project moving forward. I think it's a great question you have, Mr. Pluto, but it has no bearing on this, so we move forward and get this one done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Thompson. Seeing no other comments, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson. Trustee McGee.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next up is C, an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter VII, the Village of LaGrange Code regarding time-limited parking, and I would ask Trustee O'Brien to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Kukler. The Code of Ordinance includes provisions related to on-street parking schedules. The schedules specify locations and rules for parking on the street, including zones designated for prohibited and time-limited parking throughout the village. Many restrictions are tied to property uses in a nearby area, which can include business, manufacturing, commuter train, school, and single multi-unit residences. In furthering the recommendations identified in the two thousand twenty-two parking study to improve the parking experience of residents, businesses, customers, and commuters, the village has initiated an administrative review process to accommodate the reevaluation of parking restrictions based on current parking needs and uses. This process serves to recognize that as property uses in a particular area, parking needs and regulations should be reviewed, evaluated, to determine if adjustments are warranted to accommodate new uses. Following a thorough staff review of a recent request from a property owner on the eight-hundred block of Arlington Avenue, staff determined that the existing parking restriction of a one-hour time limit was not consistent with the needs of existing businesses in that area, and that expanding the time limit to two hours would introduce parity with other parking locations. Additionally, the time limit would better serve the needs of local businesses. The proposed ordinance will change the time limit zone on sections of Arlington and Brainerd Avenues from one-hour parking to two-hour parking in accordance with the findings of the evaluation. Funds of twenty-six thousand two hundred fifty were included in the approved fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five budget for this expense. I recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter VII, Section six dash seven dash five of the Village of LaGrange Code of Ordinances Regarding Time-Limited Parking.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien and Trustee Gale. Any questions on this? Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. I just had, well, first of all, congratulations to staff and everybody who worked on this last couple of months to make this happen. I think this is a really good use of space, and we've made customers, employees, and businesses in that area quite happy to use space that was available. I did have a question I meant to ask before the meeting, but we have, it says here we have a budget of twenty-six thousand two hundred fifty dollars funds for fiscal year for this expense. What is this expense? I'm just confused. I'm sure I'm missing something, but why do we have it noted about a budget? I mean, maybe we'll have some new signs, but I'm just wondering what that number is for.
I believe the number is for the budget that we got out for the signs. We, you know, looking into getting more signs throughout the town, and that's why we got the budget there. I think we're doing a sign study right now throughout the town.
Okay, so it's not just for this particular project? We're talking about widespread? Okay.
Right.
Great.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine and Russell, Mr. Davenport. Thank you for the clarification. We appreciate that. Again, that is for the sign study and the different signs throughout the village. And the business that was requesting this was the local, formerly the local workout. Most of the people that are going there for classes take classes that last approximately an hour, so if they get there fifteen minutes early and leave fifteen minutes late, they really are there about an hour and a half. And they were noticing as our Lysoplae readers and other things, our ticketing had gone up, and that's what prompted the request, and I do join in, Trustee Augustine, and thanking the staff for their hard work on that. And with that, I would ask Clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Next up is D, and it's related with E, and it is for wooden paddles, so I'm going to ask Trustee Gale to introduce this item, and we would invite the applicants to come and give us an idea about their facility, where they're at, and what they're going to serve, and what they hope to do. We're very excited. With that, Trustee Gale, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. As our business association, and we like to say, LaGrange is open for business, and I think there's further evidence of that by working with another business owner for the issuance of another liquor license. So our petitioners, Jonathan and Brianna Cowan, are owners of the Wooden Paddle Restaurant in Lamont and Off-Site Catering Operations. They purchased the building at Twenty-three West Calendar Avenue in two thousand twenty-two. A significant renovation of the former Pillars Community Health Building has been undertaken to facilitate a new first-floor restaurant, Wooden Paddle, and a second-floor private event venue, Remy. LaGrange Restaurant is opened by Wooden Paddle Restaurant LaGrange LLC, or excuse me, is operated by Wooden Paddle Restaurant LaGrange LLC. Remy Venue LaGrange LLC is a venue company only, and its exclusive caterer will be Wooden Paddle Catering Incorporated. Wooden Paddle Catering Incorporated is the Cowans newly established catering business, previously catering operations under one corporation. With the business expansion into LaGrange, various business divisions were recently separated into separate entities. At Remy, food and liquor services will be provided by Wooden Paddle Catering Incorporated staff, with food prepared onsite at Twenty-three West Calendar Avenue. To facilitate the business owner's proposed operations, Wooden Paddle Catering Incorporated has requested a text amendment to Chapter one eleven of LaGrange Code and Of Ordinances, the liquor code, to add a Class A four liquor license that would allow for liquor sales to occur at banquet facilities. The proposed A four license provides the licensee the ability to sell at retail and serve liquor in the banquet facility. Liquor Commission met on February third, two thousand twenty-five, to review the applicant's applications from Wooden Paddle Restaurant LaGrange LLC. to review the applicant's applications from Wooden Paddle Restaurant LaGrange LLC and Wooden Paddle Catering Incorporated, and recommends that the Village Board approve the amendment to the Village Code establishing an A4 banquet facility license classification. And I move for the establishment of the A4 banquet facility classification.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale and Trustee Peterson. And again, D and E is similar. And we will ask Brianna and Jonathan if they want to come up. I do just want to summarize for the people at home. What we are doing here is adding a new classification, a new liquor license classification, A4. And again, I think we're up to about 11 different liquor licenses. What the village does is they look and routinely meet with prospective businesses. If they're appropriate, then we work and see if there's an existing liquor license that best fits. If there isn't, then we're open to adding a liquor license, which is what we are attempting to do, and the Liquor Commission is recommending in this case. So I would invite Jonathan and Brianna to just tell us a little bit about the business, and then I'll have the trustees ask whatever questions.
Hi, thank you, Board, for having us tonight. I learned about two years into this project that it's a really ambitious project, and I didn't really know it when we started it. But we're just thrilled that we are here at this point, requesting you to approve this liquor license tonight, or both these liquor licenses tonight. Just to give you a quick timeline of our project or our relationship with LaGrange. In 2011, we came here on a date and walked around, and we fell in love with the town, just a great place. And in our journey, we started in Orland Park. We started Wooden Paddle in Orland Park. And we were looking for, we were four stools in Orland Park. And then we realized we need to become a sit-down restaurant. And we tried to buy a building in 2017 in LaGrange, and we just couldn't fit, it didn't fit the budget. And Lamont fit the bill at the time, and it's been wonderful to us. We're really thankful for that. We made an offer on the building to Pillars in October of '21, and we finally closed in April of '22. And we started construction in May of '24. And now we're saying soonish means early March 2025. Yeah, so we're thrilled. Wooden Paddle is a restaurant that has wood-burning elements. We have two Neapolitan ovens, and we cook wood-fired pizza. We have a lot of wood-fired shareable dishes. We have a great craft cocktail program. And we're really excited to showcase the marriage of great hospitality and service with a wonderful vibe at the restaurant and excellent food. Remy is something that came from our catering business. We've catered over 500 weddings since we started catering as Wooden Paddle. And we've had the opportunity to work at probably about 150 wonderful wedding venues throughout Chicagoland. And we've been able to take notes along the way in what would be a great wedding venue. And we've really invested in making an awesome wedding space for downtown LaGrange. In that wedding space, we'll be able to seat 200 people with a dance floor. And we've, I think people are going to be impressed with the space when they walk through it, because we put a lot of thought, well, Bree's put a lot of thought and effort into the finishes, and it really lays out nicely. It's going to be a great addition to the downtown LaGrange. One thing, I do have a request for the Board tonight. If, well, of course, if you could approve the liquor licenses. But beyond that, we are having an issue getting our final connection from ComEd. So I was hoping if there's anything the Board can do to help us talk to the engineers over at ComEd and just kind of make sure that we're fully connected before we're ready to open. I'd really appreciate the help on that. But yeah, please vote yes, and thanks for having us tonight.
All right, Jonathan, a couple of things. First, on ComEd, we will work with our contact to see what the holdup is and see what can be done in that regard. The banquet space, I know it's for weddings, but will it be available for other purposes if people were interested?
Yes, so most of our events with the catering company, I'd say 90% of our events are weddings. So that's where our brain kind of goes with a lot of these things. We've made it really suited for weddings, but we're wide open to any type of event. And one event I'd really like to have there is bringing the state of LaGrange back to LaGrange from LaGrange Park. I think that'd be great.
That sounds fantastic. All right. Thank you very much. Does any of the trustees have comments while they're standing? Please, Trustee Thompson, will you lead us off?
It was actually wonderful. We had 33 people show up. And usually, when you have that many people, you might get five good, you know, really great fits. But I'm not sure if anybody up here knows, but we have been producing a YouTube series. We've done 24 episodes. And it seems like a lot of people who came to that hiring fair actually have been following that series. So we had a lot of core value fits come through that hiring fair, which makes me really excited. I feel very confidently that we're going to be able to open with just an excellent opening staff. And first impressions are everything.
Thanks. Trustee Gale.
Thanks, Mr. President. I simply just wanted to reiterate what I said to you, you know, before the meeting. Just thank you for your investment in the village, and thanks for coming out tonight. And we look forward to you guys opening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, a roll call vote on D.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
And D passes unanimously. Item E, item E is to grant the actual liquor license to Wooden Paddle and Remy. The restaurant liquor license is Class A2. The banquet facility license is A4. Instead of reading through everything, I would just ask for a motion and a second to approve those liquor license and banquet facility licenses.
I move we approve the ordinance creating the Class A2 restaurant license and Class A4 banquet facility license.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale and Trustee McGee. Any questions, comments on the liquor licenses and banquet facility license? Well, seeing none, you will get our first banquet facility license. We're happy to give it to you. We appreciate that you were ambitious when you took over this project. And we welcome that and look forward to having you in town. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. If I could say one last thing.
Sure.
It's really stressful doing this bigger project. We definitely doubled down to do this project, and we're really, I think it's a great place to invest money in LaGrange. But Charity Jones over there, you really helped me out mentally a few times during this process. And thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Jonathan, for that. Charity, thank you for all your hard work, as always. We do appreciate it as a Village Board, and thanks for saying it. We do need a vote, so if Clerk Saladino will do a roll call vote.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Aye.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up is public comments on matters not on tonight's agenda.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Dean. I'm here to tell you about the great work of Russell Davenport, Milo Gojic, and the forestry team, excuse me, the forestry team in the Public Works Department. I recently needed to have some parkway trees trimmed, so I submitted a written request to the Department of Public Works. I followed up on my request by contacting Mr. Davenport. He was very accessible, responsive, and timely returned my calls. He's definitely what I would call resident-focused. He truly cares about his role in the village and takes pride in his work. Our village is so fortunate to have Mr. Davenport leading the Department of Public Works. The Public Works forestry team, led by Milo Gojic, did a wonderful job on trimming the trees on my parkways. I'm on a corner, so I have parkways on both sides. It is important to point out that they came out to inspect the trees before trimming them to ensure that they understood the problem areas. This type of due diligence is very important as it avoids mistakes. Milo's skills and knowledge of our trees is truly amazing. Again, the village is so fortunate to have Milo and his coworkers taking care of our trees. Many thanks to Russell, Milo, and the forestry team for a job well done. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dean. It's been a while since you've been at a board meeting. We appreciate you coming back and sharing those kind words. Russell, thank you very much for always making us proud. Milo in the back, thank you very much for your hard work and your skills as our forestry person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Waters, 11 North Dalem Avenue. I think I read in the news recently that with the most recent hiring of a police officer chief, that the police department's at full staff now. Is that right? So I'm wondering if that means that we might be able to see some stepped-up traffic enforcement. President Kukler, you mentioned something about increased parking enforcement. We, we're one house off LaGrange Road, and the cars just speed down LaGrange Road. And I think I can speak for all of my neighbors on or near LaGrange Road when I say it's very concerning for us. Anyone trying to cross LaGrange Road where there's not a stoplight, it's dangerous. You know, especially because you're judging the oncoming cars as if they're traveling at or near the speed limit. And if they're going 50 miles an hour, as they often do, they're on you way sooner than you expected. So, you know, we've lived here a long time. And when we first moved here and for many years afterward, LaGrange Road had a reputation as a speed trap. And that was great, because it slowed everybody down, whether there was actually enforcement there or not. So we're hoping that we could start seeing some of that again.
Thank you for coming out, Mike. I appreciate it. And I know that the police department has different enforcements and will continue to enforce or do their best to enforce the speed limits.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Pluto. I live at 718 East Avenue. Last week, I sent a couple of FOIAs in, and one of them was regarding our water reservoir. And I'll read you what I sent. It said, "Please send information when last robotic or dive test was done on village water reservoir located at Plainfield and East Avenue." I said, just all I asked for was when. It says, "All information on power washing and protective coatings in years past." And I got a denial. And I'm going to read you what it says at the end of the denial. It says, "The village does not have any public records in its possession or control or in the possession of a party with whom the village has contracted to perform the government function and that directly relate to the government function that are responsive to your request." Then it says, "Applies to no records or robotic dive test on the water reservoir at Plainfield and East Avenue." That means that we've never had our water reservoir inspected?
If you want me to guess, and I'll guess, I think it means that there hasn't been dive tested or whatever you requested.
Well, this is telling me that we never had our reservoir tested. This is, this is our most important part of infrastructure. Think about it, every time you get a glass of water or you flush your toilet, and it's been neglected since 1982, since it's been put in. There's no protective coatings put on it. It's never power washed, cleaned, or coated to protect it from deteriorating. And you got a budget coming up. And I was told a year ago that it was going to be done last May, and we got nothing. So we need to do something about this tank. I called the EPA, and they said, "We recommend you test them every five years." And I have an old task order here. And the engineer on that task order said, "We should test it relatively quicker because of its location next to the quarry." And I agree. So I have another FOIA out now, and I have it narrowed down. Now I'm not asking for the day it was. I want the report that is involved with the inside of the tank at this point. Because everybody up there, think about it, every time you get a glass of water or flush your toilet, because if that tank has a premature failure, we got no water. The next FOIA that was denied was, I asked for the South Basin sewer atlas. And I was denied because I am a risk, a security risk. I didn't ask for downtown. I asked for South Basin. I don't see any highly classified things there. All I want to know is what the top of the manhole is and the bottom of the manhole. So I'm very depressed about our transparency of our village. If you don't like me, that's one thing. But if I read you the FOIA act here, it tells me that you have to give me that information. And it's really sad.
I assure you, it is nothing to be taken personally that the response, does not matter who's asking the question and how we're going to respond. I think they may have even invited you in.
Well, you know, the great thing is, now I'm getting the hang of it, and I'm going to be putting FOIAs in every other day. And I'll come in and see yous. That's even better.
Okay. Seeing no other public comments, I would ask if there's any trustee comments. Trustee Thompson.
Thank you, President Kukler.
I can't hear you.
Excuse me, I said, so the reason that these records are held back, I've been in wastewater and drinking water most of my career, working for companies that build these systems, maintain these systems. After 9/11, Homeland Security realized that there was a major risk to giving out information on mapping and public's information. So some of that information has been deemed a security risk to give out, knowing where to put poison gas bombs, dirty bombs, blow up the water system. So some of this information is restricted strictly for security reasons under the Homeland Security Act. So would not have any request on a FOIA act, it would be Homeland Security would overrule that. And that's all I can say on that. Again, I'm talking about, you're asking for the map of the sewer lines and sewer system. That information, just like giving out a water system, can be.
You're about the safety of our water.
I'm not, I'm talking about the design of the system.
You know when that tank was last inspected? I'll tell you. 2013. I had to dig for it, and now I want the report out.
Trustee Thompson, anything else? Thank you. Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. I just wanted to say just a little something for Ms. Dean, who commented about the trees and Milo and Russell and all the work we've done. She is also to be commended for her work with the trees all on her own. I won't embarrass you, but you have spent a great deal of time protecting some of our big elms, some of our last remaining huge, old, original elms that were planted in this town at your own expense for decades now. And so we, as a town, are grateful to you. Every time I walk by, those are the intersection of Cossett and Ashland. I think of you, and I'm grateful, because they're beautiful, just giant lovely old trees. So thank you for that and caring. And to Mr. Waters, just, I live off LaGrange Road, and I feel and see it as well. But from my position up here and my frequency to be able to interact with the chief and staff, I do happen to know that we have been stepping up efforts and doing as good of a job as we can with the limited resources we have. And even at full staff, it's hard to manage both, all of LaGrange Road, 47th East, Ogden, Gilbert, and the interior streets. But, you know, we- But, you know, we do want to continue to improve, and we are, and you can get information on anything you'd like to see in terms of data. We have that, but we really are, I'm really honest when I say that we're really doing the best that we can right now with the limits we have on it not being our road, it being a state highway. But thanks for mentioning that.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Seeing no other trustee comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'm sorry. What? Thank you. I'll let you second the motion. How's that? Perfect. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjourning at 8:27, please say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously. Thank you.